And Attorney Carrero.
Here. And we have a quorum. Could you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting. We will have open forum. I understand I have another request coming. This is the opportunity for anybody whose item that's not on the agenda, if you want to address the board seat chief, and he will have you fill out an open forum request. The first one I have is for Simon Chen, 117 East 55th Street, and he's talking about some water issue, and he wants the board to be aware of it. So, Mr. Chen.
Thank you, everyone. And my name is Simon, and I'm Simon Chen. I've been living in Westmont fifteen years. And five years ago, and started water problem. And the water come up ground from my neighbor apartment complex because the slope. The problem is only water come up very short area. And you can see, everybody can see, this is the even have a tree.
Does it just go?
And the tree was down, would die. And you can see the pipe. What it does is let down spot water and just it's total down there. So, and last year, I made a ticket for the building inspection department. And Nick, he was the previous supervisor, and he take action on it, asking apartment complex and basically extend this, you know, pipe to the front of the drainage. Yeah, extend it to front of drainage, but that one doesn't really resolve the problem. The water is come up from the ground. So, everybody knows we have gravity. If water can overcome gravity, come up ground, and the ground is wet, and we have water in that small area, just like swamp, and you even cannot stand upon it. So, that is the issue. And so, I asking then, and after the first ticket was created, and water department engineer Noriel, and he take a look. What he telling me is, okay, apartment have the rights and drain water anywhere they want. And my question to him is, does Westmont building code allow one property and collect water and dumping on somewhere near the boundary and damage another property and threaten the public health? He is misleading me. And because I am a local people, I don't know, because he is a certified engineer. With this type of behavior, I don't think if you intentionally try to misleading a people, it's not suitable for public works. Because public work, you need straightforward, you need honesty, you need and fair to everyone. Because beside is apartment complex, there are corporation, maybe is your campaign owner. So, we cannot treat those type of person owner and with local people differently. You need to be fair. That's my first point. The second point, I even talk to Noriel boss, is called Mike Ramsey. And he called me last year, November 2nd. He told me, I already talked to apartment. They were started remediation work. And if they cannot complete this year, they will compete early of next year. So far, what happened? Nothing has been done. Nothing has been done. What they do, they know this is the problem. This is the fence. This is the wet area. What they do, they using those kind of rubbish and cover up. Because everybody knows West Nile virus is in this area, and Zika is on the way to the north. When you are wet area and with water, mosquito is much easier groove than just direct in the sun. So, this is make much more worse for the public health. So, this is drive me come to here and telling everybody. Because we don't want to, is like, you know, fleeing Michigan, getting worse and worse, and the public, everybody knows, then start address issue. We want to address issue at the beginning, at the start, and eliminate the damage. That's what I want. And I just meet with Ramsey. I say, hey, you told me, you told me, you already thought they will start work. Nothing happen. Oh, I cannot control their property, you know, private property. I will say, if you cannot control, why you call me? Why you tell me on the November 2nd phone call?
Well, Will, you know, I appreciate you coming in and making us aware of it, and I'd ask Manager May if he has any comment.
Yeah, not specifically about the condition, but the kind of process and circumstances you described, you know, are familiar. And I would disagree, Noriel is very well knowledgeable in this area. In fact, you know, he's the village engineer, and that's, you know, what we use for these situations. As was, I'm also a licensed professional engineer and did this in public works, you know, before in this capacity. But the... Nori, we, as your government, deal with the public properties and the issues that affect on public property or what we can do on public properties to help you assist drainage issues, you or anyone on private properties. In fact, we had a public works committee meeting before this meeting where there were people with, you know, drainage issues in their yards that came for, you know, seeking advice. And we'll do a lot of that, you know, to come out and look at it, make recommendations and do these. I can't speak for what Nick told you, you know, he's, doesn't work here anymore. But Noriel is your good resource. And just globally, he's absolutely right. It's not that, it's what we can and can't do. So, there is no code violation. If there's no local code, nothing for us to enforce.
Let me ask you one question. The code is addressed on the public property or is addressed on the private property?
The code for drainage related...
Not drainage. We just talking about general.
It depends on what it is. There's building codes for certainly, but there is no building code that addresses this relationship between, I'm not saying you don't have your rights, but it's not at a local level. It is not Westmont's issue to fight that.
As I know, building code, if Westmont building code is apply to area of Westmont, okay? That is general. So, whether is private or is a public, really doesn't matter. We have to follow the code because if the area not categorized is wetland, you need and keep dry, whether the owner is private or is a public. Because the situation right now is threaten public health. That is the issue. You cannot say, hey, your private property, local government don't care. That is not right. If you stand on that standpoint, I'm going to escalation this issue.
Caring is different than the ability to address it. Thank you for your comments, but we're well aware of your situation.
I will say, I'm publicly in the disclosure this issue, and I think this meeting is recorded. And so, we can, and go future, say, hey, does this issue need to be addressed by Westmont Village or is addressed different form?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. I have another request. This one's from, for open forum, Greg Bolts, and he's here. And I'll let him say why he's here.
Our newly ex-assessor for Dallas.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mayor, Clerk, manager and trustees, I appreciate it, the opportunity to speak. I'm actually here tonight to say thank you. On July 7th, a person entered my mom's property on 59th Street and took her flag right in front of her. My mom's 84 years old, and my dad was a veteran of World War II. And this woman walked on the, came on the property and took her flag. It was a very unpleasant environment. They were used to really bad names toward my mom. It was very traumatizing to her. And I want to tell you that Officer Scott Muska was the officer that responded to the call. The man was fantastic. He calmed my mom down. He went out and bought a flag for my mother and hung that flag out of his pocket. So, I want to tell you, Chief, amazing, I got to tell you. So, half of my widowed, and my mom who's a widow, who thinks every flag is tied to my dad, I want to say thank you, job well done. You had a good one there.
Well, thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
And while closed open forum, I had the two requests. Move on to reports. First report is mine. I'm giving an update on the Sister City. We're going to have a virtual signing ceremony on August 14th here at 8:00 PM at Village Hall. And Angela Yang and her team that hosted the Sister City Taste of Taiwan food booth, where the profits will be donated to that program. And I do have to compliment, and one of our trustees, maybe that's why she's sick today, Trustee Little put in a tremendous amount of time at the Taste of Westmont. We had a fabulous event, pretty much incident free. And again, that whole event is put on by our special events corporation, all volunteers. I've said it over the years, this community has the best volunteers in the area, and they proved it again last Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So, congratulations to the Special Events Corporation, and we look forward to, I guess, cruising nights now, tonight's one of them. Concerts in the park started last night, July 19th to August 9th on Wednesdays at Veterans Memorial Park, starting at 7:00. And that's all I have, and I'll turn it over to Clerk Simmsky.
I just want to remind everybody that the community garage sales are August 4th, 5th and 6th. We're adding Sundays, so I hope that will make a lot of our residents happy. And not only do we want to thank our volunteers for the Taste of Westmont, but our village employees that put in a ton of time getting everything set up and going, and this takes away from their regular job, and then they have to work really hard to catch back up with everything. So, the PD, the public works, the fire department, the EMTs, you guys are all wonderful, and there's just not enough gratitude showing, I don't think. So, I think we have to always include them with the volunteers. And it was a terrific case. I have never seen so much going on. So, I think everybody made a lot of money.
To put back in the community. That's what the key is.
That's it.
All right. I do have to say...
Oh, no, it isn't. One other thing, I'm sorry. First of all, I didn't get to announce Spencer Parker, our finance director, is at the board meeting. And secondly, our very youngest trustee is about to add another year.
Thank you.
So, happy birthday.
Today.
Our senior youngest trustee.
That's right. Thanks. Before I move trustees, I do have to say, everybody up here, you didn't work, Kevin, but volunteered your time at the Taste. So, for one organization or another, there's a lot of volunteer from this board, too. I'll move on to trustee, and I'll start with Trustee Addington.
Thank you. Just some things to bring everybody up to date with on economic development. We did meet last Wednesday on the 12th. We had a very interesting meeting. And our next meeting will be on Wednesday morning, August 2nd, 9:00. We meet in the room behind us. It's open. Everyone is more than welcome to come. The presentation we had last Wednesday was developer who, if he puts everything together the way he's talking and he keeps going forward, is going to change some of the face of our downtown, and I think for a very positive basis. So, a lot of good things happening there. We had on the 17th, there was a groundbreaking that unfortunately I couldn't get to for the expansion of the Napleton Porsche dealer. It's going to double the size of that dealership, which is a good thing. They're very good neighbors for all of us. They're going to be in 60,000 square feet. And last but not least, on economic development, I would like to invite up to the podium, Dr. Jessica Toric. Doctor is the owner of Urban Veterinary. They have now opened here in downtown Westmont. We're very pleased to have her. She's done a phenomenal job with her, with her building and her property, and it really looks nice. So, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jim. Mayor, Clerk, trustees, fellow Westmontians. This has been an absolute blessing from start to finish. My contractors did a great job. My staff is phenomenal. I mean, I had to call them tonight and say, I don't know where the brochures are. And they texted me back in like five minutes, like, oh, they're in this drawer and that drawer. So, in front of each of you is a little goody bag that has a puppy treat, a coupon for a free first exam for up to two pets, and a little brochure that just has some information about the clinic itself. Basically, we're a full-service animal hospital. Anything that you can bring to me during business hours, I can fix. If your dog's having a seizure, if it has a broken leg, if it has a torn ACL. I did an ACL surgery on Monday for one of the village employees, and she said that her dog is doing wonderfully, which always makes me happy. Another village employee has had a puppy with some chronic skin issues and hasn't been out of a cone, he said, since last October. And he texted me this afternoon to say, she hasn't had a cone on for two days and she's not chewing herself. Thank you. So, it's really, those are my moments. Those are the things that make me so happy, to have families that are doing well. And, you know, sometimes people just stop in when they're on their walks with their pets, just to say hi and pick up a treat. And, I don't know, it's just been a really rewarding experience. I have to thank the Westmont Chamber. Larry Forsberg has been a driving force in making sure that I'm on track as far as being out in the community and having opportunities such as this, just to, you know, give you a heads up about what we're doing over there, so.
Yeah, what's your hours?
We are Monday, Tuesday, 9 to 6, Wednesday, 9 to 7. We're closed on Thursdays, just because it's a little tough to get to us with the roads closed. But I'm out there almost every Thursday at cruising nights, just shaking hands and giving out information, answering questions. Fridays, 9 to 6, and Saturday, 9 to 1. Closed on Sunday.
You did a great job on the building, yeah.
Yeah, really.
Really. Compliments to the neighborhood.
Yeah. We have full digital x-ray integrated with our software. So, basically, I take images, they immediately go right back to the patient's medical record, and I can send them out for a radiologist review, and I get things back within 30 minutes if I need it that fast. It's just the whole process of it. My reps that have helped me, like, choose my equipment and get things installed have been phenomenal. I actually had a good friend of mine text me today and say, we're going to do what you did. Can we talk? I said, we should talk, because I made some mistakes, you know? You should learn from my pain. You know, it's been wonderful.
I understand Larry's going to replace the Lucky Buck.
Oh, yes.
We have it here.
There we go. Mr. Addington will do it.
So, if you will come up mayor with me, we'll do the presentation.
No pitching it to the ground this time.
Again, it's a kind of a tradition for the chamber and the village to welcome our new businesses in town, and we present them with the Westmont Chamber ribbon-cutting Lucky Buck. And it's, hopefully, there's going to be a lot more of these. Unfortunately, it broke when we presented it last week, so there you go. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
No, I don't drop it.
I got it.
Don't drop it again.
I got it this time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Do you have more, Trustee Addington?
One more.
Okay.
On August, Thursday night, August 17th, which I think is also village board meeting night, the Westmont Lions Club for cruising nights will be bringing in the diabetic retinopathy bus for free eye tests, and the hearing bus for free hearing tests. And as I always tell everybody, the wives always like the hearing bus because they send their husbands to find out if it's selective hearing loss or real hearing loss. But anyhow, they will be here from 4:00 till 9:00, and they usually set them up right on Ed Irving and Cass. So, watch out for those again. That screening is free and sponsored by the Lions Club, and that'll be on the 17th. And that's everything I have, sir.
Thank you, Trustee Addington.
Oh, one other thing.
I knew it.
No, but well, it just, because you started the conversation, just so everyone knows, between the mayor and I and some of the Lions, we served about 2,000 years of corn at the Taste. So, it was, it was a good taste, and we've been doing that for, well, ever since the start in 97, yeah.
Yes. Thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I do want to echo my sentiments about the Taste. It was a great event. The weather was perfect, got to see a lot of people, and got a lot of positive comments. I want to thank everyone involved in the Taste. And secondly, I want to remind everyone, our next finance committee meeting will be August 3rd here, 4:00 before our village board meeting. Everyone is invited to attend, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move over to our trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items related to public safety. I'd just like to confirm, we are going to have a September 11 ceremony, so more details will come as far as time and things. Next, I just would like to say, you know, a big thanks to, you know, all the volunteers, and especially the MA volunteers. Everybody worked so hard at our community event, specifically the Taste, but all of them. And aside from that, we're looking for more people. We're recruiting people with the MAs and certs. Please call the fire department at 630-981-6400. We'd love to have you come out and help. And then I'd also like to call up the police chiefs, got to talk about National Night Out.
Thank you, Trustee Nero, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
National Night Out is Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, at 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock at Veterans Memorial Park. We have the South Pavilion ready to go for lots of people to attend. National Night Out, for those of you that don't know, is a police-community partnership. It's a kind of a feeling to bring a true sense of community back between the police and who we serve. So, Deputy Chief Grunen has very dutifully put this together and has a long list of participants. One more thing, National Night Out has been in existence since 1984, so this is its 34th year, but this will be the first time that the Westmont Police Department has participated, so we're very proud of that. We are going to have food. We're going to have vehicles from both the police and fire department. So, thanks for, Westmont Fire Department for also attending and participating. High school jazz band, People's Resource Center will be collecting diapers and non-perishables. First student bus company will have representation. Walgreens down at 8 West 63rd. Brendan Smile Foundation, whose mission is to protect and treat students with mental illness and suicide prevention. The Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. And finally, last but not least, the Westmont Public Library. Julia will be there with, they're going to be making portable travel tic-tac-toe games for the kids. So, it should be a great night. We're hoping for a huge turnout, and we hope to continue this moving into the future. So, I handed out a flyer. Larry's been all over advertising it, so get the word out, and hope to see you on Tuesday, August 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And one other comment is the Westmont Police Department is recruiting candidates for police officers. Hopefully, we can find some more good officers like Officer Muska, and feel free to find out some more information on our website, or call the police department. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item six, the public hearing. And it's a public hearing for the issuance of bonds. This hearing will come to order at this time. Let the record reflect that this is a public hearing being held pursuant to the requirements of Section 10 and 20 of the Bond Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois as amended. Notice of this hearing was published on June 28, 2017, in the Westmont Suburban Life, a newspaper of general circulation in the village. This is a hearing regarding a plan to issue not to exceed 7 million in aggregate principal amount of the issuer's general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2017. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the cost of a municipal stormwater management program and public infrastructure, and pay certain costs of the issuance of the bonds thereof. The bonds will be issued by the issuer in accordance with the provisions of Section 15 of the Local Government Debt Reform Act of the State of Illinois as amended, and shall constitute a general obligation of the village payable from all collections distributed to the village from non-home rural municipal retailers, occupational non-home rural municipal service, occupational taxes at a rate of half percent approved by the voters of the village at the April 7, 2015 consolidated general election. Such other funds legally available and appropriated therefore in taxes of the village for which its full faith and credit have been irrevocably pledged, unlimited as to the rate or amount. This public hearing is required by Sections 10 and 20 of the Bond Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois as amended. At the time and place set for the public hearing, residents, taxpayers and other interested persons will be given the opportunity to express their views for or against the proposed plan of financing, the issuance of the bonds and the purpose of the issuance of the bonds. Is there anybody here who wish to comment, or do you have anything in writing? Yes, Mayor?
My name's Mary Gabriel, 1012 Fordham Way in Westmont. I know you read your prepared legal thing, but can you explain how the bonds are going to be paid for in kind of simple English?
Essentially, the voters gave us stormwater and infrastructure sales tax.
Okay.
So, it's pledging that sales tax to pay the principal and interest for 20 years.
Okay, so the bonds are going to be mainly used, then, for stormwater?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to do, it's going to, and the other, Spencer's here, but the $7 million is what we comfortably can do in a three-year period, because you've got to spend all your bonds within a three-year. Even though we're pledging to retire those bonds, it's still going to leave 700,000 to 800,000 annually in that fund for other projects. hundred thousand annually in that fund for other projects. Tell.
One question, I guess, for Spencer. Based on today's rates, what do you think interest rates range you're gonna have to pay on the bonds?
It's hard to tell for sure, but we're, estimate it'll probably be pretty close to about three percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, is there anybody else who has a comment or question? Okay. And again, all residents, taxpayers, or other interested persons attending the hearing and desiring an opportunity to express their views, which we did stood. This concludes the public hearing regarding a plan to issue not to exceed seven million in aggregate principal amounts of the village's general obligation bonds or the alternate revenue source, series two thousand seventeen, at six thirty P.M. Moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Is there any board member who'd like an item? Trustee removed? Seeing none, I'd ask manager maid to please read the consent agenda.
First on the consent agenda are Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the following meeting minutes. There are two. Special meeting of the Village Board and the Library Board held June twenty-ninth, twenty seventeen. And secondly, the Village Board meeting held July sixth, twenty seventeen. It's filed by Finance Ordinance Number Six, the amount of one million, five hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. Next is the May financial report. Board to consider a motion to accept the financial report submitted for the month of May, twenty seventeen. Now we have purchase orders. First purchase order is Compass Minerals America Incorporated, forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. This is a, this is actually for winter road salt purchase, but it's part of a joint purchasing effort, so we're encumbering the funds right now. The next purchase order, the next three purchase orders are for Curry Motors for vehicle replacements that are also part of a joint purchasing state bid in this case. First one is forty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Is the replacement for what we've referred to as, it's a pickup truck, unit two thirteen. Next is thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars for pickup truck, unit two thirty-eight. And the third one is seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is a one-point-five-ton truck, and that's unit one thirty-six, sorry, it's unit two thirty-six, but it's actually replacing unit one thirty-six, and then there's a, an internal Next purchase order is DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars, forty-three cents. This is the annual membership dues for DuPage CBB, and it's, it's calculated at a quarter of a single percent of what we collect as our five percent hotel motel tax, so it's, it's based on percentages. The next is Onyx Networking Corp., thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. That's our annual licensing for the Google applications. That is, of the purchase orders, they total two hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars, forty-three cents. That brings the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number Six to one million, eight hundred eleven thousand, three hundred and one dollars and thirty-two cents. And that completes the consent agenda tonight.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second. On the question, anybody in the audience have a question? Any trustee? Seeing none, roll call, please.
And I'm gonna explain to everybody, because to complete our forum, the mayor will vote.
I don't wanna vote.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Mayor Gunther?
Yes.
Moving on, new business, twenty-two North Cass, retail art and therapy coaching. Board to consider ordinance approving a development permit request from Edward Dadwood and Kristen Tom to allow the operation of an art retail store and therapy office in the B-one Limited Business District and Director Ziegler.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, the applicant is requesting to operate an art store in the front of the building that would take up the majority of the space at twenty-two North Cass, and then a very small hundred-square-foot therapy office in the rear. These are both allowed uses, so it simply requires a development permit approved by the board, and no additional parking is necessary. And I'll invite Edward and Kristen to explain their businesses.
Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about your business?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, members of the board, as well as you, Mr. Mayor. So we, we are very thankful to have the, our, the opportunity to follow my second passion, and that would be the, the passion of art. The only thing that ever held me back was every time I would walk into an art store or art gallery, it, pretty much everything was out of reach in terms of my financial needs. So I always wanted to come up with a solution of the average person to go in and buy a beautiful, hand-painted piece of art that is not gonna break the bank. And I found a solution a few years ago with a friend that has a similar art shop out in Michigan. And throughout the years, I've been working with them, and I recently got connected with a distributor that is here local, well, I shouldn't say local, but Al Grove, to have the opportunity to do so. Our artwork is gonna be priced anywhere between a hundred to eight hundred dollars, again, all hand-painted, original art. So I know that's gonna bring a lot of success, but I think what the majority of success that's gonna bring to what we're doing is really getting involved with the community. We have already started using some of the resources that are here in Westmont, such as the print shop, and I hope, I know the vet left, but we are gonna definitely get our dogs in there and kinda work with her as well. So we are very excited to do this for the town. You know, driving through this town at night, even around the holidays with how it's lit up, it, it brings a certain exciting, excitement for us. We're seeing the developments. We are seeing new construction go up, businesses flourish, so we are very, very excited to be a part of this. Again, most of the, a lot of the excitement and the opportunity is gonna be with the, with joining, you know, being a part of the Chamber of Commerce as well as other businesses in town. So I want to thank you for your time, and hopefully, we could move quickly with this, because we are excited about it, and I'm excited about it. Now, just go ahead and let Kristen do her part as well. And if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Hi, and I'm Kristen Tom, the second half of, of this new opportunity. And again, echoing Edward's sentiments, we are so excited to be given this opportunity and to do it here. I've been in this area, I've lived in Hinsdale and Clarendon Hills for the last twenty years, and I have seen the growth of this town. And it's beautiful. Like you said, you go down now, those, I envy those flower pots. I want them for my house, because mine keep dying. But it is absolutely beautiful, and that space for us is just our dream come true. So my side of that, I am a happiness mentor and a licensed social worker. So I am going to help my clients build new life skills and teach them happiness and teach them their new emotions, so that they can take these new skills into their personal relationships, into their careers, and into their families, to just bring a bit more light and happiness and love into the world. My background is in mental health. I dealt with crisis and trauma for the past five years, so I have a good grasp on what people need moving forward. And in this world where there's so much negative and so many things to complain about, I'm hoping to bring people to that place of feeling light and happy, and to be able to spread that around, and again, to be a very positive force in this community.
Is art part of your therapy?
Well, I'm hoping that that's something that, I, I think it blends very well, that people can walk into that, they can spend a few minutes looking at some of these beautiful pieces. I have the opportunity that I can put some beautiful pieces in my office as well to promote that peace and that peace, sense of well-being. So I think it segues very well, and I get to do that with my partner and my love, which I, it's just for us, this is so perfect and so beautiful. We're, we're truly excited that I, and so I get to have that creative side, and I get to help people, which is my passion.
Any comments before I ask for a motion?
No.
Motion to approve as presented?
So, go ahead.
So moved, Guzzo.
Second, Addington.
Motion made in second. Anybody in the audience have a question? No trustees? Seeing none, now roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Mayor Gunther?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
The only question is, when can we expect to be open?
We are looking at September, September to October, depending on the bill of the space.
Very good. And Larry Forsberg will set up that ribbon-cutting for you.
There you go.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
New business B, increase available Class twenty-three liquor license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available Class twenty-three liquor license by one for Hilton Chicago Oakbrook Hills Resort and Conference Center, thirty-five hundred Midwest Road, Westmont. Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner, Liquor Commissioner Mulhern.
Good evening, mayor. Thank you, and happy birthday trustee Nero.
Thank you.
Hilton Oakbrook Hills, thirty-five hundred, Midwest Road, submit an application for a Class twenty-three liquor license, which allows them to apply for a video gaming license with the Illinois Gaming Board. Oakbrook Hills wishes to provide video gaming as an amenity to their guests. Their main business will continue to be that of a hotel resort. Class twenty-three license is needed before a business can seek a video gaming license from the Illinois Gaming Board. As far as a recommendation, the board must determine to increase the number of Class three twenty-three liquor licenses by one if desired. The number of Class twenty-three licenses is capped, as previously discussed by the board. Oakbrook Hills is eligible to apply for and receive a Class twenty-three liquor license. As was discussed recently, the board just recently issued its first Class twenty-three liquor license. A Class twenty-three license is ordered before, is necessary before any business can apply to the Illinois Gaming Board. Must go through the background. I've met, with me here is Stephen, the man, general manager of Oakbrook Hills. I've met with them. They are eligible. They have been in business for three hundred and sixty-five days. A review was provided to the board by myself, and so at that time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Stephen and let him tell us a little bit about what they plan to do.
Tom, just as a clarification, the three hundred and sixty-five days is actual serving alcohol and in business, so may more than qualify.
Our licenses require must be an operational type function, and they have been serving alcohol for three hundred and sixty-five. They've been in business under this ownership for, for the past three years, so they exceed the threshold set by the board. One other thing I'll add too, is they're seeking five games, and I'll let Stephen.
Again, it's not when you get your liquor license, but when you start the operation.
Right. It has to be when they start selling or serving alcohol, kind of like a probation period, so that they can prove to the Village Board that they are responsible with the privilege that they've been given.
Thank you. Now I'll let you talk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, clerk, trustees. How are you this evening?
Thanks for having us. It's an honor to be here in front of you, and obviously representing the resort. My esteemed colleague, Mr. Randy, who's been our golf pro for longer than he wants me to say publicly.
Since day one.
We are, we are, we're excited to add an amenity to the resort, and truly, that's what it is. This is honestly, really not a financial move for us. This is more to really round out everything we've been trying to do to make the resort as fulfilling an experience for our guests and for the community as much as we can. So we would be in the Tin Cup area downstairs, and we've, we've, we've talked about the legalities around that of, of having that in eye view of all time, doing five games. We think it would be a wonderful community thing. I think you have a lot of it around in many areas of your community now. I think this is a little bit more of a, a, a private experience, if you will, and also it would be a gaming experience for our guests. And we've talked about some opportunities for, for locals to come in and maybe bring up some special events for them, that they could come in and have some, some private time around, that they could, you know, maybe seniors in the community or things like that that come in and enjoy this in a relaxing atmosphere that's safe and, and obviously bringing some business to the resort. And then for the locals, for people coming into the resort, traveling in, we have, next year, we'll probably do close to fifty thousand group rooms at the resort. Thank you for your support. We're having a banner year. This is our thirtieth year. I don't know if you know that we've been open that long. This will be the highest revenue generating this year, thus the largest tax-paying year for the resort, so we're experiencing quite a bit of expansion and excitement at the resort, as you know. And this just, I think, falls in line with that. We're trying to add as many community-based and, and culturally different types of things to do at the resort as possible, including our events, but this just sort of adds to that. So I hope that you trust us with that, and that we'll manage that properly.
I do have to compliment you on your involvement in community.
Thank you.
Reaching out to the community the way it was thirty years ago. That resort's been open thirty years, but under various management. So this past three years, you have become very much involved in this community, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. We had, we had an epic Fourth of July. Thank you for the fireworks. We had, we had over seven hundred attendees at our Fourth of July, and it was a huge event for us. And our Father's Day recently, I don't know of those of you that joined, we had over six hundred people attend our, our, our Father's Day event. And I won't tell you about, about New Year's yet, but it promises to be even more exciting than last year, so thank you. We're excited to be part of the community, and we are genuinely excited to continue to partner with you and bring awareness to Westmont and more activities, so.
Chairman Swastika's talking to Stephen. The hotel and Stephen have been an ambassador, not only getting the word of Westmont out. Their television exposure on New Year's Eve, they were live on Channel Seven, and also the Father's Day. I remember turning the channel and all of a sudden, live from Oakbrook Hills, they were there for the channel, bringing out the Father's Day event. So Stephen, if you could also just to one question, how you plan to advertise the gaming? Will you have external signs, or how do you plan to advertise the presence of the games?
No, to be very, very, very conservative internally. We'll make guests aware, we have a lot of activities at the resort. This would just be an added amenity to the guests that are at the resort. And if we do choose to do anything externally, it would be very, and again, I emphasize the word, very conservative, very carefully placed, no signage externally, no signage on the streets, although I'd love to have a bigger street sign. Took my sign away. But I had to say that for you, Randy. But no, we would not be doing any external signage, and even the internal promotion would be very limited. It would just be an additional amenity at the resort that guests would be able to experience.
Additional questions?
No.
Comments? We're not gonna hear from Randy about the golf course, so.
Say a few words, Randy?
Does it affect the simulator?
Golf course looks great, come out.
Take away from the simulator.
We, we would, we, we discuss that. You know, there, there, it has to be visibly monitored at all times, so we would make sure that the placement would allow that. So there's some concerns with that location in that, in that simulator room to the left. So originally, when the concept had come out, it would be in that sort of private dining area, which is in between the pro shop and, and the Tin Cup bar itself. I think that may be a better area, but I gotta arm wrestle with my partner over here. But I assure you that we will, we'll meet all the, all the legal requirements for ensuring that the games are visibly monitored at all times, and, you know, that we'll do it in a very low-key, professional way.
What Stephen's talking about, the state requirement is it has to be in a direct line of sight, monitored anytime there's gaming available. They were originally talking of putting in where one of their golf simulators are. That is the problem Stephen indicated. If the gaming board or the inspectors come out and give them permission, I believe that'll be their first, you know, place of choice. If not, where we discussed about the area, it's a dining area, now the gaming would be there, provided whatever they receive permission from, from the gaming board inspectors.
And this goes back to the original intent of this board, is to have our local businesses get the opportunity to have gaming. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to approve. Additional questions or comments? Anybody in the audience? Randy, last opportunity. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gunther?
Yes.
Okay. It's a six-month, is it about a six-month?
There is, yes.
With the state? Okay.
Usually, from the time they apply, and they know the system well, because they're familiar with it, probably eight months from, if they were to apply today, eight months from today, before they could probably begin to see the gaming actually in place.
Thank you.
Nero, thank you.
Moving on to new business C, reduction of the Class Four liquor license. Board to consider an ordinance reducing the number of Class Four liquor license.
Was there a vote on the?
Oh, oh, vote, roll call, please. She voted.
Yeah.
Was there?
We voted.
Yeah. We both must have had a lapse of judgment.
You must have been conversing.
Let me put this down.
We apologize.
Yeah. Do we vote again?
I believe I have a vote.
I voted yes. All right. All right. Moving on to reduction of Class 4 liquor license. Board to consider ordinance reducing the number of Class 4 liquor license by one due to the closure of Pizzeria Kuchenova, 800 East Ogden Avenue, Suite 21B. And we've got Commissioner Mulhern.
On May 17, 2017, Pizzeria Kuchenova was closed for business and has remained closed for business since that date. Their Class 4 liquor license is declared forfeited by the Liquor Commissioner per Village Code Ordinance 10-45 cessation of business. The board has asked to reduce the number of available Class 4 liquor licenses by one due to the closure and forfeiture of Pizza Kuchenova liquor license. This is a housekeeping issue. In the future, our goal is to have these under the consent agenda to expedite matters with the board.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Addington.
Made in second. On the question, and this is just housekeeping. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call. Okay, trustee Addington.
Yeah, this kind of goes back to the last one. Then the hotel's really going to hold two licenses then. We're not going to reduce, we're not going to eliminate their other license.
No.
They'll just have the 23-plus license we created for the hotel. Okay.
We created the 23 for gaming.
Yeah, so they'll hold both.
Yes. And they're not the only one. I think there's Uncle Bob.
Okay. So they'll have two also. All right, good.
Again, as a reminder, any new Class 23, they have to appear before us.
Right.
Request it and been operating the 365 days. So now I'll ask for a roll call.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Mayor Gunther?
Yes.
New business D, intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County. Board to consider an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the County of DuPage and the Village of Westmont regarding implementation of the DuPage Justice Information System project. Now, have Manager Maed discuss this.
Mayor, and everyone, we had a much longer conversation about this at the Public Safety Committee level, but this is a project that's been a long time in the making, not only related to, but not directly part of our, you know, consolidation or our move to Addison for dispatch, but this is a county-wide effort to standardize record management and the systems that we all interface with each other to -- a lot of benefits, you know, eliminating duplicate entries and things like that as well, but it's a resource that the county invested, the ETSB, the Emergency Telephone System Board is very involved and has funded a good portion of this. But every community is a member, and our participation is a function of our size and the amount of users that will be on the system. So the details of the actual annual participation in this are still being worked out. This is you authorizing us to execute the intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County when it's ready.
Do I have a motion to -- motion to approve? Nero?
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second. On the question, and no trustees, nobody in the audience, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Mayor Gunther?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Miscellaneous, is there any item that?
Don Harrell's not here today.
Anybody would like to discuss? Larry Forsberg, do you have anything from the chamber?
I'm down at the center.
Okay. Randy, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Addington.
Second, Nero. Motion made in second to adjourn the meeting. Roll call.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Mayor Gunther?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.